Is your local business or organization looking to give back to the community? Help keep our roads clean by joining the Adopt a Road program administered by Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful. Keeping our roads clean is a great way for team building as well as exposure for your business. Select the road your business wants to adopt and dispatch a team to remove litter and debris. Participants will receive two signs showing their organization's name, as well as safety equipment and instructions for cleaning roads. You can help keep Tampa Bay beautiful by adopting your own road today. To learn more, visit hcfl.gov/cleanhc.
Don't let mosquitoes ruin your day. Fight the bite by removing standing water on your property. Standing water of any kind is a breeding ground for mosquitoes. Do your part and help reduce the mosquito population. Visit hcfl.gov/fightthebite.
These are the jobs you may not see every day, but just know we're working hard to make Hillsborough County a better place to live, work, and play. Subscribe to our YouTube page for more great county-related videos, only on HTV.
Welcome everyone to Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners 2024 Investiture Ceremony. Today, Ken Hagan, Christine Miller, and Chris Bowles will take the oath of office for Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Honor guards, get ready. Please stand as Hillsborough County Fire and Rescue Honor Guards begin our ceremony with the presentation of colors, followed by the invocation given by Donna Cameron Cepeda, Countywide District Five Commissioner and Chaplain, and remain standing until the honor guards have retired the colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning with grateful hearts. We thank you for who you are. We lift up our great nation before you this morning. We thank you for these peaceful elections that we've had. We thank you for your blessing on our nation. We thank you for blessing our county, Hillsborough County, Florida. And we pray for every person that has been elected to office. You said in your word to pray for those that are in leadership in government. And we pray for each and everyone across our land that has been elected, and especially for those elected here in Hillsborough County. We pray for this board that we work together for good, for our county. We pray that not only a place to live, work, and thrive, but a very blessed place. We pray in the name of Jesus. And we pray for this meeting this morning, and we bless everyone here in our county in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. You may be seated. Thank you for being here on this very special day as re-elected and newly-elected members of Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners take the oath of office. We have several government officials with us today who I would like to recognize. I ask that you would please hold your applause, and if I, when I call your name, if you would please stand. And staff, if you would give me the list, I would certainly appreciate it. Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask our elected officials. The Honorable Kelly Ayers, Thirteenth Judicial Circuit; the Honorable Matthew Smith, Thirteenth Judicial Circuit; the Honorable Samantha Ward, Thirteenth Judicial Circuit; Chef Chad Quanister; and Chief Deputy Thomas St. John. Did I omit anyone? If so, would you please stand and be recognized? Nancy Malone, okay, our tax collector, thank you for being here. First to take the oath of office is Ken Hagan, representing District Two. I invite Mr. Hagan and his swearing-in party to come forward. Administering the oath of office for Ken Hagan is Ken Hagan, Sr.
I, Ken Hagan, solemnly swear.
I, Ken Hagan, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
And the Hillsborough County Charter.
And the Hillsborough County Charter.
That I am duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
That I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
Of County Commissioner of Hillsborough County.
Of County Commissioner of Hillsborough County.
On which I am now about to enter.
As I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Commissioner Hagan. Next, Christine Miller, representing District Four, will take the oath of office. I invite Ms. Miller and her swearing-in party to come forward. Administering the oath of office for Christine Miller is the Honorable Judge Jane Moody III, Thirteenth Judicial Circuit.
Thank you. Raise your right hand, please. I, Christine Miller.
I, Christine Miller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government.
That I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government.
Of the United States and of the state of Florida.
Of the United States and of the state of Florida.
And the Hillsborough County Charter.
And the Hillsborough County Charter.
That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state.
That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
That I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
Of County Commissioner of Hillsborough County.
Of County Commissioner of Hillsborough County.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Commissioner Miller. And last, Chris Bowles, representing Countywide District Six, will take the oath of office. Will Mr. Bowles and his swearing-in party please come forward? Administering the oath of office for Chris Bowles are the Honorable Judge Gregory Green and the Honorable Judge Wesley Tabbas, Thirteenth Judicial Circuit.
Raise your right hand. I, Chris Bowles.
I, Chris Bowles.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And government.
And government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
And the Hillsborough County Charter.
And the Hillsborough County Charter.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office under the Constitution.
To hold office under the Constitution.
Of the state.
Of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties of County Commissioner.
Perform the duties of County Commissioner.
Of Hillsborough County.
Of Hillsborough County.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Commissioner Bowles. I'd like to ask Commissioner Cohen, representing District One, to offer remarks for our re-elected and newly-elected commissioners. Commissioner Cohen, good morning.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair, and congratulations to the new commissioners. These are familiar faces, and that's a good thing because what I know right away from the very beginning is that this is going to be a collegial board that is going to come together to really work to solve our community's problems. And I often say, if the questions and answers were easy, a computer could do the work. But in fact, it takes people with different perspectives and different experiences to come together and really give voice to the broad section of concerns that our community faces. And what is really special about this body, I think, is that as we wrestle with different issues, different coalitions emerge with the same opinions. And oftentimes, they're across party lines. Oftentimes, they are not necessarily the coalitions that you would expect. And one of the things that I want to say at the outset is that the one promise I want to make to all of my fellow commissioners is to come in here every single meeting with an open mind, willing to listen and hear what you all have to say. Because I find that I learn a lot when I perk up and listen and really take to heart the words of people that I know are out in the community, interacting with people, hearing what they're saying, and bringing that back here so that we can flesh it out. So I look forward to working with all of you, and I know that we're going to have an excellent, an excellent years in front of us.
Thank you. Commissioner Donna Cameron Cepeda, representing Countywide District Five, your thoughts?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for choosing to serve the people of Hillsborough County. And for those that are new and those that are continuing to serve, thank you for your many years of service to our community. We really appreciate you, and we really look forward to working together and serving the people of Hillsborough County to make it better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I invite Commissioner Joshua Stuhl to share some comments.
Thank you and welcome, new colleagues. As we enter these next two years, I would highlight some of the significant challenges that our community is still currently feeling in the aftermaths of the storm, some of the new opportunities that we've heard about from the Rays potentially playing in Hillsborough County, and what risks that might also ensue. I would encourage us to not be confused and dismayed by parlor tricks that we might see of economic impact statements after they play in Steinbrenner Field, and that that might suggest a new opportunity for a new Rays stadium here in Hillsborough County. I would suggest that we make sure that we test their metal and that they fill our resolve, and that we make sure that special interest groups do not profiteer off of the backs of Hillsborough County citizens going forward. I would hope that we can come together to ensure that we continue to be a voice of the voiceless and those that are feeling the very tough times of the economics of Hillsborough County, Florida. Welcome to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just like to conclude to say, Commissioner Hagan and Commissioner Miller, it's been a pleasure to work with both of you all. You all both know what we have that lies ahead of us for our constituents, and we're going to make sure that we continue to provide good service to Hillsborough County. And to the newly-elected Commissioner, Chris Bowles, you know, it's a pleasure for you to join me as a former county employee of Hillsborough County Government. Oh, let's show some love, you know, when you. So I'm sure no one asked you, did you need directions around County Center, because we always see you, but you're going to bring a wealth of knowledge and a wealth of information on behalf of the citizens of Hillsborough County, and I look forward to working with you as well. Thank you. And now we'll have comments from County Administrator Bonnie Wise.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers, and to all of the commissioners. I am delighted to be embarking on this journey with you and very much look forward to continuing to work with you in various new capacities as well. I'm just going to say a couple of things just directly to each Commissioner. Commissioner Hagan, your steadfast commitment to our community is truly unsurpassed, and your years of experience has really helped me grow as a county administrator, and I'm grateful for that, and I look forward to the next four years as well. And Commissioner Miller, you have had, in your short five months or so, three hurricanes and various other events unprecedented that we have ever seen, but during that time, I was able to see your commitment to Hillsborough County and the love that you have for your district, and I very much look forward to working with you in the future as well and continuing that relationship, hopefully without three more hurricanes, however. And to Commissioner Bowles, you have served this community as a Hillsborough County firefighter with duty, honor, and courage, and I know that you're going to continue to do that in your role as the county commissioner as well, and I look forward to it. You're going to bring a perspective like Commissioner Myers says, as a former county employee, and with that, it really has a knowledge that others don't have, and it's going to be so helpful. And I also know how many commission meetings you have sat in during your time with us, and I think that that's going to be invaluable, and I look forward to working with you in this new capacity as well.
Thank you. And County Attorney Christine Betts.
Yes, welcome, welcome to this new board. Your service as elected officials is invaluable, and I think certainly from Bonnie and my viewpoint, we know how hard it is and how much work it requires and how much dedication to serve your community, and so we're all very thankful for that. The County Attorney's Office is here to assist you in any way that we can at any time with all of your legal and other issues, and never hesitate to call on us, and we very much look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I invite our colleagues who've just taken the oath of office to say a few words. First, Commissioner Hagan, who represents District Two. Commissioner Hagan.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. First of all, I want to thank everyone for joining us for this very special ceremony. It's hard to believe that this is my 12th investiture, eight after an election and four as a sitting commissioner, but even after 12 investitures in 22 years, I still get excited about this ceremony because it allows us to reflect on the recent campaign season, but at the same time, we celebrate a new board and a new beginnings. I've seen many ups and downs and board changes over the last 22 years, but I can say that I'm truly excited about this new board and about the opportunities that lie ahead. I want to congratulate Commissioner Miller on her successful election. You hit the ground running as an appointed commissioner, and your constituent spoke loud and clear, both in the primary election and the general election, that they wanted you to continue fighting for District Four. Great job. I also want to congratulate Commissioner Bowles on your countywide victory. This is an incredibly diverse county, and I know from experience that running a countywide campaign is a daunting challenge, particularly for a first-time candidate. Congratulations and welcome. I am confident your real-world experiences and perspectives will make you an excellent commissioner, and I pledge to work with you on your goals and priorities in an effort to improve the quality of life for everyone in our county. Since my first investiture, I've stated every time that, under both Republican and Democrat control boards, that I've stated that local government should not be about Rs. and Ds. It should be about doing what's best for the residents of Hillsborough County. Thanks to the leadership of this board and the county administrator and her team, the county has established a strong financial foundation that positions us well in moving forward and addressing our needs. But as strong as Hillsborough County is financially, we face enormous challenges, starting with the explosive growth we are experiencing and will continue to experience for the foreseeable future. That's why we must continue to improve our efficiencies and our organizational performance while maintaining the highest levels of service delivery. I feel incredibly fortunate to have served for 22 years on the county commission, and I want to thank the residents in District Two for having the trust in me to continue representing them as their district commissioner. Dozens of friends and family members have played an integral role in each of my campaigns, and it's not possible to thank everyone who supported me, but however, I do want to thank my two legislative aides who run our office and make sure the day-to-day tasks of constituent service are our priority, and that's Rich Reedy and Glory Burgers. They work extremely hard, not only running the office and taking briefings during the day, but also attending public meetings and campaign events during the campaign season during the evening. Without them, our office would certainly fall apart. A special thank you to Rich, who's been with me from the beginning. He is a tireless campaigner, works night and day, fighting for our constituents, and is a true public servant. I also want to thank my family for being there for me during all of my campaigns. Unfortunately, my wife is out of town working, and my son can't get away from class in Gainesville, but as a high school senior, I'm fairly certain my daughter has senioritis and had no problem skipping school today to be here this morning. Elizabeth, I'm so proud of you. You have an extremely bright future ahead of you. I also want to thank my sister Kimberly. She's worked extremely hard during all of our campaigns. She is a walking machine going door-to-door every day. Thank you, Kim, for your hard work. I appreciate you more than you know. Last but not, but certainly not least, there's absolutely no doubt that if it were not for one man, I would not have been elected in 2002 or reelected seven times. In an era of paid campaign consultants, campaign managers, finance chairman, one man has not only won all of these hats, but he's tirelessly campaigned door-to-door. He's moving a little slower these days, but he still makes fundraising calls and does everything he can to garner support, as well as illegally driving my sister around so she can go door-to-door. Sheriff Quanister, you can ignore that comment there. He is without a doubt the hardest-working man I know. He's my role model, and his name is also Ken Hagan. Dad, never be able to thank you enough for everything you've done for me. We did it again. In closing. In closing, I'm honored and humbled to again have the opportunity to serve the residents of Hillsborough County, and I look forward to working with each commissioner to continue making Hillsborough County the best county in the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. District Four, Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you all for being here today and for the incredible honor of serving on the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. As I sit before you, I'm filled with a deep sense of gratitude and responsibility. First and foremost, I'd like to thank God, from whom all blessings flow. Being appointed by the governor of the free state of Florida was an honor of a lifetime, but being elected by the people in District Four is unmatched. I'm incredibly humbled, and I hope that you'll indulge me in allowing me to say a few thank yous. To my parents, my father who couldn't be here today, who lives at Baldemar Lopez Veterans Nursing Home; to my sister and my brother, thank you for living a life that always valued community and service to others. You set the bar high, and I promise to keep chasing it. To my friends, my circle, you all know who you are. If I called you out by name, I know it would make me cry, but whether it was a much-needed beach getaway, time over lunch, or a random moment we could squeeze in laughing our way through campaigning, or just a phone call while I was traversing the county, thank you for your endless support and encouragement, allowing me to be real and raw and use all the swear words. I love you each deeply. To my chamber team, thank you for holding down the fort, continuing to deliver for our business community, even with a physically absent leader. Your dedication to Plant City and its continued six- and its continued success has allowed me to chase this dream. To Cassandra Marion, thank you for your patience with me as I learned this new role and for your passion for the good people of District 4. I can't wait to see what we accomplish together in the years ahead, and I'm grateful to have a front-row seat as I watch you to continue to grow in your role. To everyone who gave their hard-earned money, time, and talents, opened their homes, and more for my campaign, thank you from the bottom of my heart. I've heard people say that, you know, it was the people you meet along the way, and I always thought that was kind of hokey. But it's really true. The people that come behind you and believe in you as you enter into this journey are really the best part of campaigning and growing into this role. Thank you to newly sworn-in State Representative District 70 and former District Commissioner Mike Owen. He's not here with us because he's probably being sworn in at this very moment. But he has honored his word and helped me in every way and is very committed to working alongside me as I serve District 4. I also want to acknowledge my colleagues on this board, the county administrator and the county attorney, and all of the team. Your dedication to this community is truly inspiring. I look forward to working along each side of you as we tackle the challenges ahead and build on the progress we've made together. You lead with grace and passion, heart and soul, for all we represent. Your kindness you have shown me in the last few months, and I'm so incredibly honored to continue to serve alongside you. To newly sworn-in Commissioner Bowles, I couldn't be more thrilled that you jumped in late in the game, kicked butt, and chose to serve in this new way for your county. I'm probably just as excited as you are to be here in this moment. I'm grateful for you, and in full transparency, I'm happy to not be the new kid anymore. Last but certainly not least, I want to extend my heartfelt appreciation and thanks to my family. Your unwavering support and encouragement have been my anchor through every step of this journey. To my husband Les of 25 years, my sweet Harper, and of course, my bigs, Colton and Emma, your willingness to say yes. I simply could not and would not have done this without you. Your sacrifices, your patience for all this is, I'm thankful. You have been a source of strength, inspiration, and joy, and I love each of you infinitely. As we look forward to the future, I am excited about the work we will do for our residents. We have the opportunity to address pressing issues such as public safety, critical roads and infrastructure, and fighting to keep our taxes low. Together, we can work to ensure that Hillsborough County remains a vibrant place to live, work, and thrive. I am committed to listening to the voices of our community and advocating for solutions that reflect their needs and aspirations. Collaboration will be key in the months ahead. I encourage each of you to engage with us, share your ideas, your concerns, and your vision for our county. This is not just a moment of celebration. It's a call to action. Together, we will work hard, remain dedicated, and strive for excellence in our service to the people of Hillsborough County. Thank you once again for your trust and support. In closing, I'd like to say that I'm humbly and deeply grateful to represent all of you as your commissioner in District 4. I promise to work hard and smart and to deliver results. God bless you all, and may God bless Hillsborough County.
And now District 6 Commissioner Bowles.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I've actually written down what I was going to say because I've been known to blather on, so I'm going to keep it to the paper today. I would like to thank all of you who have attended today for supporting all of us. And it's really, I'm grateful for that, and I know we all are. And I appreciate your attendance. I wanted to first express my deepest gratitude before I go on to everyone who made this journey possible. For those of us up here, we know that running for elected office is rarely a solo endeavor. It involves family, friends, and a network of people who have offered their unwavering support. As we all endure the stress and challenges that come with a campaign, they're there to lift us up. I would first like to recognize the two incredible women in my life sitting in the front row. My wife Amber and my beautiful daughter Harper. Over the past five and a half months, you've made my life so much easier and have been my unwavering support system throughout this journey. Your patience, love, and encouragement have been my foundation. Thank you. Any success I have achieved is only possible because you've allowed me to give this endeavor my all. And because of you, the sun shines on the Bowls family. I would also be remiss because I just saw him walk in, my son, who's sitting way in the back. Wave your hand, son. There you go. Thank you for showing up. I love you as well. To my campaign team of volunteers, your incredible hard work, confidence, and dedication were the driving forces behind this victory. You gave your time, energy, and unwavering commitment to support me. And for that, many of you in this room, I am very deeply grateful. And I would also be remiss if I didn't also acknowledge the thousands of first responders who live here in Hillsborough County, who represent, and law enforcement officers who represented me and who stood firmly by my side, as well as our sheriff, Chad Cronister. Thank you very much, sir, for your support. And thank you all for believing in me. I have some of my fire rescue family in the back row. Thank you. To the voters, members of our community, thank you for placing your trust in me. I am very grateful for the conversations we've shared over the last five and a half months, your willingness to voice your concerns, and the opportunity you've given me to represent you. As your commissioner, I am committed to listening with an open mind, learning from your experiences, and leading with integrity, humility, and empathy. On a personal note, I'd like to thank Judge Greg Green and Judge Wes Tibbles for coming here this morning and tag-teaming. I know Judge Moody could do it by himself, but I needed to. It was a big Bible. That's why we needed that. But thank you very much, and I appreciate you guys administering the oath of office for me. Finally, I would like to thank my parents, who unfortunately couldn't be here today due to distance and health reasons. And I want everyone to know, without your guidance and support, I wouldn't be sitting here. Reflecting on this journey, I realize that your careful scrutiny of every decision I made growing up, both right and wrong, shaped me to be the person I am today. I am a reflection of your values, love, and lessons. And for that, I am forever grateful. Today marks the second time I have taken an oath to serve, support, and protect our country, state, and the citizens of Hillsborough County. The first time was over 28 years ago. And I've had that honor of serving this community as a firefighter. During this time, I've spent nine years away from my family, living and working alongside my second family, the dedicated men and women of Hillsborough County Fire Rescue. This closeness has forged lifelong bonds as we have all faced the rewarding and challenging moments that come with our work. Together through our sacrifices, we have made lasting impact on countless individuals and families throughout Hillsborough County, one emergency call at a time. It has been an incredible privilege and honor to serve beside all of you. Over my 28 years with the county, as Commissioner Myers was saying, I said I've built many meaningful relationships with my colleagues, both in this building and right here on this dais. I spend hours both upstairs and standing where the podium would be, investing time and effort advocating for change. I intend to leverage my knowledge, along with the mutual respect and trust I've cultivated over these years, to drive meaningful changes that our communities need. My focus will remain on prioritizing the core functions of local government, though. That include not just enhancing public safety. Some think I'm one-dimensional. I'm a little more than that. But developing infrastructure to support sustainable and measured growth, as I think we'd all agree, improving our roadways, and maintaining fiscal responsibility to safeguard our taxpayer funds as we move forward. I want everyone to know my commitment to serving the citizens and employees of Hillsborough County remains unwavering. I am interested, I am not interested, actually, on the distractions often associated with political theater or the politics that come with the parties. However, my goal is to direct my efforts to continue seeking solutions that truly benefit our county from perspectives that are rooted in critical thinking and practical solutions. I've often said that we must believe, that we must be willing to give more of ourselves, which I think I've done over the last 28 years, than we ask for in return, and prioritize our service above self-interest and ego. I would like to close with a notable point. And again, I think Commissioner Myers had pointed this out to some degree. Today represents a significant milestone for Hillsborough County. Many of you in this room, or out on TV, may not realize that up until today and a few moments ago, I was still an active classified employee of Hillsborough County. Not a director or an administrator,